Yeah.
Good.
We're firing.
You're firing. Okay, looks like it's four o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get the June 22, 2015 meeting of the Salina City Commission underway with a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, well, first thing we're going to do today is our pledge allegiance and a moment of silence, and before we get started with that, I think it'd be appropriate to address some of the things that have happened this past week in South Carolina and really in other sort of a cause that the rest of the nation has kind of taken up as well. So I think as we pause today for a moment of silence, we maybe think about some of our brothers and sisters across the country that have been impacted by this event and that as we, and it's a great opportunity here with the members of Purple Heart Society here today as well to also when we say the pledge to really give that an increased awareness of what that really means. So with having said that, I would ask that all of you who are able to please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I am almost completely through this cold that I started last week, so hopefully I'll make it the whole meeting here, but I'll thank you in advance for your patience with me and my voice. So we'll go ahead and move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, proclaim the city of Salina as a Purple Heart city. Mike Callahan, Department Commander, State of Kansas, for the Military Order of the Purple Heart will read the proclamation.
All right, Mr. Callahan, please. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon and pleased to be here. Proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas, whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or killed in combat by a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the Salina area and the state of Kansas have a large, highly decorated veteran population, including a numeral Purple Heart recipients, and whereas the city of Salina has consistently supported its military veteran population. Now therefore, John R. Blanchard, mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, proclaims the city of Salina.
Okay, and we do, of course, encourage all the citizens of the city of Salina to help observe in this special proclamation and in the designated activity as making this a Purple Heart city. We thank you for that. Do you have other events or other ways to commemorate this?
We have our Purple Heart Memorial out at the, by the War Memorial in the park. Basically, what was it, on August 22 of 2014, I was privileged to be with Governor Brownback, who proclaimed Kansas as a Purple Heart state, and in 2012, Brownback proclaimed Topeka as Purple Heart capital. We hope here in the future, after this proclamation is read and sent to department headquarters, that I can get with the engineering department and get some signs erected at the main entrances to Salina.
That would be a very nice addition. What is the date and time of the event that you're going to have? Was there a specific time and date?
No.
There was?
Not right now, sir. It depends on when we get the okay from national as to what I can proceed on to do.
Okay, well, I will just add that there's a really nice memorial near the memorial in Sunset Park that was erected for Purple Heart recipients, and it's a really nice memorial, and I just would encourage also residents and citizens to go by and take a look at that when they have an opportunity and also to visit the memorial there. So I have a signed proclamation for you, and I will come down there and meet you out front with this. And I'd like to compliment Commissioner Crawford on her attire this afternoon. Very appropriate. And thank you all for being here, and thank you all for your service as well. We greatly appreciate and are indebted for that, so thank you very much. Okay, let me find my agenda here, and we'll move on to the Citizens Forum. And Citizens Forum is an opportunity for citizens to come up and address the commission on any item that is not on today's agenda, and we only ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less and state your name and address as you approach the microphone.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm Mike Forstall. I own the Lee Buildings, corner of Elm and Santa Fe. I'm sure you're all aware of it. Now, I have a second developer that has told me he has interest in developing the Lee. The first developer that we spoke about last year has since moved on. He was not accepted under the state program for the 9% tax credits, all right? It's once a year, and normally you're accepted based on a point system, and he evidently didn't have the time to put all his information together. Based on all that, the Lee Building was not accepted, and even if it had, the amount of credits it would get would have been about 25% of its development. Now, I have another developer that is coming the 1st of July, and he wants to talk to me about the Lee Building, and he'll probably want to talk to the city about it as well, but he will need a resolution or at least acceptance by the city to develop the Lee Building into affordable housing under Section 42. He's talking about being in what they call the 4% program. The 9% program is a 9% per year tax credit for 10 years, so in effect, they get 90% of their overall cost back over a 10-year span. The 4% program is a 4% federal tax credit for 30 years, so they can effectively get about 120%. The only difference is that he will be wanting to make these 100% affordable. Now, we did talk to the last developer at a 90-10 trying to get some market rent apartments in there, but if we're going to be in the 4% program, it's going to have to be 100% affordable. Now, the 4% program, you can be accepted all year long for those because those 4% tax credits are, it's a bonded project, so you have to get bonds, which typically either cities issue those or they get bonding agents to get bonds derived, some other method. Now, I'm sure they know how to do this. The developer I'm talking about is Cohen Ezri, which is one of the Kansas City's largest developers within about a 12-state area. They have 467 buildings and 57,000 apartments, but they do only 100% affordable housing. So I have spoken with the state today, as we've had the situation occur last time I spoke with the state before I came, and they have told me that technically for a 4% program, they don't need city approval, but they would like to have city approval, just as we spoke last time, whether it would be a straw vote, a note on your agenda that you've all discussed it and would like it, or it's going to have to go all the way to a formal resolution. Now, as I asked prior, it was for a blanket resolution so I could go to one of the five developers I had at that time, and Cohen Ezri was one of those at that time. So however you want to move forward with this, Cohen Ezri is to be here the 1st of July, and I will discuss with them what they think they will need, but I'm sure they're going to need some approval from our city. That's my number-one topic, so I don't know how you want to proceed with this.
Well, I will just say this, that I know that our next scheduled meeting, our next regular meeting, I believe, is July 8th or?
Sixth.
Sixth? Okay, so we're certainly not going to be able to meet that July 1 timeframe. The other thing is, as far as, you know, we discussed this last time, I think that we try to stay away from blanket endorsements without having staff being able to take a full look at whatever your plan is. So I think our suggestion, as it was last time when we worked with you and the developer at that time, would be to just suggest that you work with staff and work something that they're able to put together and bring back to us as a body that we can then take whatever the appropriate action at that time would be.
Well, invariably, it won't be any different than last time because there were no plans available. The developer hadn't, nothing, you know, figured out other than he just wanted some approval to take to the state. So invariably, it's the same thing as we did last time between Mr. Hobby and myself. So yes, I agree.
There was quite a bit done, though, by staff to prepare.
Right.
The commission at that time.
They prepared some things that you had up here on the screen and some documentation, I agree.
Well, and that we also took a trip to look at this.
Well, I'm sure you can go see, look at another one if you like, but they're all pretty much the same.
Well, and that very well may be the possibility, but we'd like you to work with staff to get us to that point.
Okay.
So.
All right, well, then I have another, a second issue, and I'm sorry if I'm taking up everybody else's time.
No, you're certainly okay.
Okay? Second issue has nothing to do with the development other than me owning property in this community. Now, I reside within the county, and I work within the county, and I by far own probably more than most people do within the city. A thought for consideration is to let not only the constituents that live within the city vote, but also the property owners, because otherwise, I'm going to have to do what I did last time. I'm going to have to continue to vote with my pocketbook on the issues that I feel are strong. So food for thought. Thank you.
You're talking about a statutory law you can't affect.
Right.
Yeah. So there's nothing to look at in that, with that particular request, unfortunately.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the community that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move along to, and thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
We will, since we have no public hearings, our item's scheduled for a certain time, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 15, 2015. Item 6.2, award of contract for the sanitary sewer system rehabilitation, project number 15-3068 to SAC Construction LLC of O'Fallon, Missouri, in the amount of $562,495. And item 6.3, resolution number 15-7251, authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to the First T agreement with the First T, Saline County, Kansas Incorporated, a Kansas non-for-profit corporation.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to have removed? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Move on to administration.
Item 7.1, general obligation bonds and notes, 7.1A, resolution number 15-7250, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds, 7.1B, first reading ordinance number 15-10783, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bond series 2015A.
Okay, this is staff report by Mr. France.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's coming up on that time of year again when we issue our annual round of bonds and temporary notes to finance projects that are either underway or will soon be underway within the city. Temporary note series 2015-1 is going to be in the approximate amount of $5,993,000 to finance improvements to Iron Avenue and North Ohio Street and to complete the renovation of Fire Station Number One. That note will be due in one year, and at that time will likely be rolled into long-term bonds with the bond payments first coming due in, actually in 2017. The bond series 2015A are financing two projects that are either complete or well underway. The developments at Magnolia Hills Phase Four were actually completed some time ago, and we will be issuing $775,000 to finance those public improvements to that subdivision. Bicentennial Center improvements are well underway, as I'm sure you're aware. The notes for that were issued last summer, and we will be rolling those into long-term bonds in the amount of $5,105,000. We do have about a million dollars left that is unexpended. That will be expended over the next several weeks to months, and it is possible, maybe even likely, that we will be issuing another temporary note series either later this year or early next year to finance the last phases of the Bicentennial Center project. So this was the second set, and there's a third set yet to go. And finally, the bonds will also include a refinancing of series 2006A bonds. There is a modest savings and interest cost in doing so of about $113,000, and we think it is probably an appropriate time to do that. The options available at this point is pass the resolution authorizing the public sale of general obligation notes and bonds, do the first reading on the ordinance. You do have an option of, certainly with the ordinance, the refinancing of the 2006A bonds is certainly optional at this point. The other projects represent money that has been committed earlier at the time those projects were authorized to proceed, so I would entertain any questions.
Questions for staff?
Is there any reason not to refinance that bond portion?
You know, if interest rates were highly volatile and were moving firmly in one direction or another, you might think that, well, if I wait a year, you know, my interest savings might be greater, and so it would pay to do that. That's not likely the case. Interest rates are, continue to be near historic low levels, and I doubt that our position will improve sufficiently to offset the one-year additional savings, so I'll short end, no, there's no reason not to do it.
It looks like we have questions here, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time, and we have no public comment, so we'll go ahead and bring it back for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of resolution number 15-7250, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation temporary notes and bonds. I mean, some of these are two separate actions.
They would be.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to approve resolution number 15-7250, authorizing the offering for public sale of general obligation and temporary notes and bonds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. And if there's any discussion and/or action that we can take on the ordinance.
I move that we pass on first reading ordinance number 15-10783, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement bond series 2015-A.
Second.
That's an amount of $7,900,000?
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion to second to pass on first reading ordinance number 15-10783, authorizing the issuance and delivery of $7,90,000, principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds series 2015-A. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That pass on first reading, 5-0.
Item 7.2, resolution number 15-7252, authorizing the city manager to execute a claim settlement agreement with Beechcraft Corporation.
Okay, this is Mr. Bankson, and you should have had a 7.2 delivered to your desk. So, Mr. Bankson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This matter is in the context of the work of the Salina public entities in relation to the former Schelling Air Force Base contamination or environmental matter. You'll recall that includes the city of Salina, the Airport Authority, USD 305, and Kansas State University. The position of the public entities, as I'm sure you're aware, is that the contamination was caused historically by uses of the United States government. In the context of the lawsuit, that is the kind of overarching umbrella of the mediation that resulted in the current remedial investigation and feasibility study work that is underway, there is a position taken by the United States government that because of the ownership of those local public entities for a period of time since title was transferred from the United States government, that there is a share of responsibility for the contamination alleged by the United States government relative to the public entities. That includes partly the period of time in which Beechcraft Corporation, formerly known as Hawker Beechcraft, was a tenant of the Salina Airport Authority for a number of years. That Hawker Beechcraft entity, to be distinguished from the current Beechcraft Division of Textron Incorporated, filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy in May of 2012. In order to fulfill its due diligence, the public entities, on the recommendation of our environmental council, filed claims in that bankruptcy proceeding, however recognizing that they had to be contingent and unliquidated in that the amount of any alleged responsibility or amount due under the claim could not really be determined because the extent, if any, of Beechcraft's involvement had not ever been conclusively determined. But as I say, as a matter of due diligence in terms of any claims of local responsibility, the public entities file those claims. We believe it is fortunate in that discussions between the bankruptcy specialists with our environmental council and counsel for the debtors in bankruptcy have negotiated what would be a stipulated sum as far as that claim. That stipulated sum, as proposed, would be $2 million, and the document before you is the beans by which that stipulated claim would be deemed to be settled and established at that. We do feel that's beneficial in that it eliminates any need to litigate or further investigate any allegations of responsibility, but simply sets the sum at that amount. Now, as you would probably be familiar, in that Chapter 11 bankruptcy context, that claim is the threshold determination that then leads to what actually comes from that in terms of any actual distribution, and only time will tell, but as is normally the case, that would be more in the range of pennies on the dollar. But it is significant for us in that there would be a certain sum recognized that would be set aside and either applied toward the cost of the current RIFS work or potentially the actual ultimate remediation that is determined to be the best course of taking care of the contamination. So again, this is a matter that environmental council is recommending in consultation with the CEOs of the four public entities. The CEOs felt like it was the prudent step. You may have seen some of the coverage, the Salina Airport Authority, the timing was such that this was actually, just came to be as recently as last week. It was in time for the Airport Authority to consider it, and they did authorize the agreement last Wednesday. USD 305 will consider the proposed settlement agreement at their meeting tomorrow, and Kansas State University is in favor and is working through their process of obtaining approval as well. And if you would, staff would recommend that you approve what has been identified as resolution number 15-7252 that would authorize the city manager to execute the settlement agreement. In this case, it seemed most appropriate, given the role of the CEOs, for each of the CEOs to be the designated signatory for each of the public entities. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff?
No.
No questions? Well explained.
Rats are ruck.
I'd just like to say that that was a nice catch by the environmental council.
And I should mention, too, one other thing. In our discussions with environmental council, we felt like it was important, and they did, they concurred. This is in conjunction with discussions with the Department of Justice so that they know that we are fulfilling any due diligence that we might have here locally, and of course, it's all leading toward ultimately the continued mediation of the ultimate cost allocation.
Right.
Oh, do you know where on the, I don't know what they call it, but on the bankruptcy proceeding, we might be for payment? Down at the bottom or toward the top?
Well, that's a good question. This is characterized as a general unsecured claim. In other words, we're in that group at the bottom. We're not the only ones where there was no property associated or collateral associated with this obligation. with this obligation. It is simply in that group of general unsecured creditors. So, we have company, but we are in that lower group.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up front here for action discussion, whatever the case may be.
Mr. Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I would move that on item resolution number 15-7252, that we authorize the city manager to execute a claim settlement agreement with Beechcraft Corporation.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 15-7252, authorizing city manager to execute a claim settlement agreement with Beechcraft Corporation. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, move on to development business.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 15-10780, amending Chapter 14 of the Salina Code by increasing the maximum fireworks facility size from the current 2,400 square feet to 5,800 square feet.
Okay, this week, we have the fire marshal in town, so we'll hear from Roger Williams on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Apologize for not being here last week, I had other business that I needed to tend to. I'm not quite exactly sure where we're at as far as the final motion. Before you, Dean Andrews and I worked on getting this ordinance put together to increase the allotted square footage of the tent size from 2,400 to 5,800 square foot, but our desire is to keep the actual onsite storage at its current size of 120 square feet. And the rationale behind that is, is with the increase in the 5,800 square foot tent, it does allow for additional storage inside the tents themselves, which therefore we felt that that was already kind of exacerbating the amount of fireworks we had onsite, and if we added additional onsite fireworks, it was just that much more, as well as having the fireworks stored inside of a, whether it's a container, trailer, truck, whatever it may be, that is compliant. It's a little more challenging from a firefighter perspective because of the explosive nature of the fireworks in such a compacted unit as it would be if we increased it to 240 square feet.
Okay, we have any questions of staff?
Do you have any statistics on the relative safety of various sizes of tents or the level of incidence of mishaps or that kind of thing?
I don't really have any statistics, but just from my experience, I haven't seen a lot of actual fireworks tents go up. You usually see that actually more in the fireworks manufacturing industry than you actually do in the sale or distribution of fireworks themselves. And we do, there's a lot of, with the zoning ordinance as well as the fire code, there's a lot of preventative measures. We're continuously doing inspections during the time that the event is going on for retail sales. Our truck companies go out every day and do site visits to make sure that they don't have trash accumulation, that people aren't actually smoking close to the tent, and really continuously staying on top of the maintenance aspect, if you will, of the retail sales.
I think we're good here?
Let's see, have any questions?
Okay, I think we're good. We'll go ahead and hear public comment at this time, and then we may have a few questions coming back. So, does the applicant care to? Okay, we're good here. Any other public comment? And we have no public comment, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. And I'll just ask, does anybody have questions or any additional for staff? I just have one, just summary question, just so, kind of let everybody know where we are on this, and that is, is that on Section 3, the effective date has been established as January 1, 2016.
That is correct.
Okay. This would be, this would be first reading of this ordinance, and would we anticipate then at the January 6 meeting then to have a second reading then with the effective date?
At the July 6 meeting.
July 6.
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on first reading ordinance number 15-10780, amending Chapter 14 of the Salina Code by increasing the maximum fireworks facility size from the current 2,400 square feet to 5,800 square feet, effective January 1, 2016.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to, oh, I'm sorry. Further discussion, thank you, Vice Mayor. Further discussion?
Well, I've thought a lot about this issue, and it seems to me like we never learn from history. And maybe I'm saying that because I'm the old lady up here, but the reason fireworks were discontinued several years ago is because children's fingers were burned off, eyes were blown out, and there were fires. Police Department and Fire Department, as I recall, were opposed to this coming back. It came back anyway a few years ago, what, it's been six years, seven? I remember when it came back, but...
I can't remember, that was right along that timeframe.
I know it's longer than four.
Aaron Peck was the one that signed it. Aaron Peck.
Yeah, Aaron Peck. I think that was just...
2011 or so.
It was before I was on the commission. Anyway, because I wouldn't have voted for it. It seems to me that the whole issue of fireworks is not about patriotism, it's about money-making. Bigger and bigger tents and more and more storage areas is just about money. It's just about making money, and I won't vote to expand it, so, not in city limits. That's mine.
And I do think that we can and should probably evaluate the effectiveness of our ordinance locally. I do know that people historically have had fun with fireworks on the Fourth of July, myself included, and so, but I think that we do need to be cognizant of what the rules are and that they are obeyed, and I'm going to be out there at 11 o'clock, Fourth of July, watching, hopefully, a dark blue sky. After all the fireworks are gone. So, anyway, I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion after the Fourth to determine the effectiveness of what we do here.
Okay, well, thank you both for those comments, and since we have no further discussion, we'll take the vote, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes, that passes 4-1. Commissioner Crawford dissenting. Okay, thank you, guys. Just real quick, Chief?
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you here, as always. Thank you, guys.
Item 8.2, application Z15-6, requesting approval of an amendment to Section 42-59D2 to increase the maximum allowable size of a consumer fireworks facilities and to increase the allowable size of an onsite inventory storage unit, 8.2A, first reading ordinance number 15-10781.
Okay, thank you, and staff is Mr. Dean Andrew. Hello, sir.
Hello. We have nothing new to add, other than Fire Marshal Williams and I have matched notes, and the ordinance that you have in front of you is consistent with item 8.1, and it increases the tent size, but maintains the storage unit size, maintains the 20-foot separation, and also has an effective date of January 1, 2016.
Okay, any questions for staff? Thank you very much, and we'll take public comment at this time. And seeing no public comment, we'll bring it to the commission for action.
Move that we approve application number Z15-6, requesting approval of an amendment to Section 42-59D2 to increase the maximum allowable size of a consumer fireworks facility tent and to increase the allowable size of, well, we're going to keep the storage unit the same, I guess.
Okay, that is a motion to approve ordinance 15-10781 to increase the size of the tent.
Correct, and not change the size of the storage.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number, on first reading, ordinance number 15-10781.
Question?
Go ahead.
If the size of the storage unit is not being increased, is this necessary in light of what we just passed, the previous ordinance?
The need for the ordinance is somewhat due to a redundancy. The first ordinance was amending our adoption of the International Fire Code, and this ordinance is amending the zoning code as it relates to temporary uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none?
This is being changed from the way it's written here, then?
This is simply putting the zoning ordinance for conditional uses in line, or is it a temporary use?
And the agenda language reflects the original application, which was for both expansion of the tent size and the storage. The ordinance language reflects the deliberations that you had last week wanting to just expand the tent size and not the storage size.
So, the header there just reflects what Mr. Wasserman applied for on behalf of his client, but the ordinance did not change any of those items, but that was their original application.
Okay, well, let me seek clarification from the motion maker.
What I would like to say is, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance number 15-10781, which would include those items where they should be.
And that second is consistent with that, okay. I think we're good there, and we'll let the record stand for the entire motion and...
So, I may just be having a moment here, so that I'm clear. The motion as made would in...
Increase the size of the tent, but have no effect on the size of the storage.
So, it's changing the wording.
And...
Yeah, Commissioners, in, let's see, subsection D, specific uses and regulations, this subsection after that would be D2, consumer fireworks facility, and then D2A, which gets you down to the specific language, and D2A says, "Consumer fireworks facilities may operate from tents or canopies only with a maximum size of 5,800 square feet," and that's the piece that's changed for you.
That, unless I'm just missing it...
If you look at your attached ordinance on page three and look at subsection seven at the top of page three...
Okay.
You will find that that language reads just as it does today, that "single secure storage unit not exceeding 120 square feet in size, maintaining a 20-foot setback from the tent or canopy or any other structure." So, the ordinance that you have in front of you makes no change to the current requirement, which is a 20-foot separation, and maintains the 120-square-foot size.
I think, Commissioner, what, I think that, I think where you're seeing a difference is, is that the application had requested a difference in the storage side, but the ordinance that we had discussed and that we had tabled or postponed till today contains, and just to summarize, the three issues were the size of the tent, which has been changed in this ordinance. The storage unit and setback have remained the same, and the effective date has been set at January 1, 2016. Those are all contained in the ordinance as presented to us as 15-10781.
But now, this application is still to increase the size of the...
The applicant had asked for that, but the ordinance, in essence, says, "We agree with part A, size of the tent, part B, the storage container, we don't concur with that." So, the ordinance basically keeps the storage unit the same size, increases the tent size.
You have the discretion to not act on the application as requested in its entirety, so you essentially would not be granting the full request, you'd be granting the tent size increase, but not the storage size increase.
So, this motion is on the ordinance or on the application?
Ultimately, it's on the ordinance.
Should we have voted on the application as well?
I think that's what was throwing me off.
Well, the application doesn't mean anything when your mechanism for adoption is by ordinance, so that's why you're actually acting on the ordinance. That's the tool that you need, the tool with authority to take the action, so the application's not really all that relevant at this point in time.
Thank you.
Well put. Are we ready to vote?
Do it now before I forget.
Okay. Then we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
That, too, passes 4-1. Vice Mayor Crawford dissenting.
Right, you bet. Next time it comes up, I'll do it again.
And would you correct that for the record last time?
I'll nay it the next time, and a lot of people out there in the community will agree.
I think you're right, so I appreciate your comments, so...
I know I'm right.
All right, do we have any other business today? Guess not.
I, well, I've been, got a couple of suggestions from folks.
Okay.
One of them is that, from an older woman, I was talking to, was saying, "You know what? You need more businesses downtown that appeal to women, because men don't shop, women shop." And she said, "Get more businesses down there, you'll see more people shopping, more women shopping."
Hey, I'll go down there more.
And then I was also talking to a younger person who said, "You know what? You ought to go ahead and just..." We're talking about quality of life issues and biking in particular, and he said, "Why don't you just call yourself the road bike capital of central Kansas? And you'll accomplish two things. Number one is, you'll have your priority in place to enhance your level of bike hike paths in town, plus, you'll attract an audience of people who would load their bikes on their car, drive to Salina just to experience the road bike capital, you know, system of trails." So, you say you are, and you become one.
Okay.
That sounds like a good idea, too.
There are a lot of places we could go with that one, but, well, real quick, I'd really like to, once again, thank the Military Order of Purple Heart for being here today, and I think that that would be a great gateway entry signage deal into the city, be a great addition. One other thing, speaking of quality of life issues, is I just want to remind everybody that Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m. will be the ribbon cutting for the Save-A-Lot Grocery Store on East Iron.
For real?
And Downtown Grocery Store, and, you know, I know that was a big thing with staff and this commission, and also for Commissioner Shirley and Householder, that that store happened, and where it is, how it is, that whole thing. So, to the 3,000 people that signed a petition that said they would support that store when it went in, I'm going to call you on that now, and we're going to ask that the community support that store, but also, I think what it did was illustrated very well, citizens coming together, expressing their desire, and a governing body hearing them, listening, and acting with that will. So, I think it's going to be a great addition to downtown, and particularly to that Oakdale neighborhood for the people at Oakdale Plaza and the people at John Town, Johnstown Towers.
And Mayor, I think you're being overly humble here, but, so, if you won't say that, I will, but as you know at the time, and some of you that were on the commission know, there were people that were saying, "Hey, nobody's interested in that location. You need to go to another location, you need to bundle it with other things." And as a governing body, your direction was, is we really need to try to put it back at that location. It's a good location for the downtown and for the neighborhood, and as a result, the Commissioners, you approved a sales tax reimbursement agreement, I believe up to 250...
the Commissioners approved a sales tax reimbursement agreement, I believe up to $250,000, to help them with the capital improvements to the facility to get it ready to be reopened, and I believe that made a huge difference in the opportunity and probably was a but-for, an opportunity for that to open and for us to have a grocery store once again this week. So, the governing body gives some kudos for staying the course on that and watching it through.
Well, thank you very much, and I would just add to that two things. One is that a group of citizens who worked through the Greater Salina Community Foundation, and this was, these were donations, they're not investors, but about 12 or 13 individuals stepped up and raised about $210,000 to put along with that. And hopefully, we'll be able to recognize them on Wednesday. They probably don't want to be, but they're great examples of people finding what's important to them and supporting that, and it wouldn't have happened without them. And so, hopefully, Wednesday at that ribbon cutting, we'll be able to appropriately identify them. But also, I just want to say for staff's standpoint that when the project, and I think it was late December, looked like it was dead, that Deputy City Manager Mike Scragg stepped up and kind of took the lead and got that thing back on track. And, you know, I certainly know that the governing board appreciates your effort in that, and I think that neighborhood and the people that will shop at that store certainly appreciate that as well. So, thank you all, and I think it's a pretty important, Wednesday will be a really important day for that neighborhood, for our community as a whole, and I think we've got a lot to be proud of for what we're able to come together as a community and accomplish. So, thank everybody involved. Hopefully, all of you that can be there on Wednesday will be there, and if there's nothing further, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Not even take discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.